Bye.
Trip a treat yesterday.
Mine?
Yeah. My name is?
Yeah, around my neighborhood and my mom's.
Exactly.
We went to my sister's. Well, it was fine. Yeah. Do this, guys. Thanks, Trey. Oh, I went to the EDC Future of Work. And they had your, they had your name typed, so I had to scratch your name out. I like mine, and I was like, sorry. You guys don't get Jackie day, I'm hanging out.
I do.
It's an upgrade.
Hello. Okay. Uh, Ann said that she will be up in one minute. She's printing documents out. Um, and then she'll be up, but we can go ahead and get started while we're waiting. Um, okay, you guys, so today is November first, 2022. It's 11:00 a.m. And this is a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Um, so I will ask everyone to make sure their phones are silenced. Um, and then if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, peaceful, just as well.
Skeleton there was a little. Jaw harding for a second.
I mean, the spider. The spider got me a little. Okay, sorry, we were still cleaning up some trip a treat streets.
It was a very great event.
It was wonderful. Okay, um, approval of the agenda. So it looks like we've got four things on the agenda for today. Um, do we need to make any adjustments or movement on the agenda?
That's good to me.
Yeah, that's great to me. Thanks, I'll move to the agenda as written.
One second.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
All right. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Um, community informational items, we'll start with Commissioner Munch.
Um, gosh, I don't have anything today. Well, yes, no, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Um, Christian, do you have?
Uh, for me?
Okay. Um, I think for me, just a huge thank you to Main Streets and the Rec Department for Trip a Treat Street. It was a great event. Um, so thank you to them and all of our business community that volunteered to participate. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, public comments on items not on the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak on these issues are welcome to raise their hand or put in the chat section that they'd like to speak. We will call on you in order. Um, comment is limited to three minutes, not including board questions. And if action is required, we will, um, delegate that to staff to follow up. So, um, just checking to see if there's anybody here for public comments today. So seeing none, we'll move into new business. Um, so Ann, you are welcome to come up.
All right. Yeah, I can probably just go from here.
Okay, that's great. Um, so first on our agenda today is a discussion on updates with the Community Planning and Development Department, um, presented by Ann Schneider. So Ann, I will turn it over to you and Tim, um, to, to help with any updates that you might have for us.
That sounds great. Thank you so much. Um, so I just wanted to kind of touch base on, um, upcoming, what the upcoming Dwyane hearing schedule looks like. Um, so November fourteenth, uh, we're going to hear Angel View two, second filing, um, Angel View, our major subdivision. And November twenty-eighth, um, will be City on a Hill. Um, they have two applications that will be heard. One will be, um, a CUP for a multifamily, a residential unit above. Um, it'll be a multi-use building, but the, the multifamily piece needs to have a conditional use permit.
Okay.
Uh, they will also have a site plan review at the same time, heard by the planning commission. We'll have, um, hopefully our last ADUCUP. Um, looking to make those administrative, but we do have one on Copper Drive in Matchless Estates, um, for the twenty-eighth. And then, um.
Say that one more time, Ann. I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Um, that will have a, on Copper, nine fourteen Copper Drive.
Okay.
In Matchless.
Okay.
And.
Ann, sorry, the first thing that you had on that list for the twenty-eighth meeting?
Was City on a Hill.
Okay.
Um, for multifamily CUPs. And then, uh, they also will, we do have a site plan with the planning commission. We'll just put you both those files together. And then the ADUCUP for, um, on Copper Drive. And then we have, um, the first application for a special event facility, um, brought forward by David Kerner for the Climax Revival. You may remember at least the parcel, it's the Mini Placer, um, that had, uh, applied previously for the Jackass Jamboree. So it's that same parcel that is coming before the board on November twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Um, and then December second, um, so far we have the CI Rezone. Um, and just to recap on that, um, that is, uh, we did get a direction to go ahead and work on the county-owned parcel next to the, um, Begal Storage, um, to look at rezoning that to CI. Um, Bryce is assisting me, um, with that application. We've, uh, spoken about it together, and I think that he's going to help us staff to put that application together.
Yeah.
Um, we will also have the, tentatively, we've done a completeness review back to the Red Bull Seven. Uh, that's a major subdivision, subdivision, uh, sketch plan. They have given us a preliminary application for stretch. And we've done a, um, completeness review and they're in receipt of that. So we're waiting for them to come back in, um, addressing the items that we've outlined to them.
And where's the location of that one?
So that's at the top of Twelve Street. It's on Fairview Hill.
Okay.
That's, um, and it's dual zone, part of it's in, um, UR Zone District and part of it's in the IM. Power lines really kind of there, really separate zoning, um, between the UR and the IM. And so that major subdivision, if they can get their completeness, uh, review items back into us um, in time to make, uh, publication, that would tentatively be on December second.
Okay.
We have the New York Placer, um, PUD, Plant Unit Development. It is just to the south of Matchless Estates and to the west of West Woods. Um, has been referred to in the past as the Matchless Two. Um, that, uh, is a pretty dense PUD, approximately two hundred dwelling units that, um, are just in for completeness review right now. So we are working on, um, that review. And so tentatively, we may hear something on that sketch-wise, either, um, the second meeting in December, if we hold one, or, um, in January. So that's kind of what is, um, upcoming for public hearings and applications that are pending for public hearings. There is, um, I was just gonna send something out to everyone at our meeting on the twenty-fourth. I think I, um, most misspoke when I said that the, um, county will be open on December twenty-sixth. That's actually, uh, lead day, and so we won't be open on the twenty-sixth. That would be the normal, uh, regular planning commission hearing date, have our second hearings in December. So we'll just send out like, um, a doodle poll to just query everyone if they'd like to, uh, potentially look at a different date in December to, um, make up that meeting.
Do you have anything scheduled further?
Um, tentatively, New York Placer, um, would be interested. And, and we actually have, um, three or four other applications that are in various degrees of being prepared to come forward. So if they, um, you know, we've kind of, we've got some in the wings.
Okay.
That, um, might be ready to be heard, um, before the end of the year. And, and so I would say in the next week or two, probably a better idea if those are gonna be ready to, um, make that thirty-day, um, focus period. So we'll have a cutoff of that, um, towards the end of the month, um, that we would know for sure. If, you know, if we've got anything that wants to try to make that second, um, opportunity in December. So I'll just be, uh, asking the board about that. One other thing that I think's kind of, I hope the board will be excited to hear, is that there is money in the budget, um, for me to work with one of our planner consultants to work on the sign code. And so I'd love to use that opportunity that we still have left this year, as we're doing some code amendments, um, to go ahead and look at that. So what I would, uh, I'm going to be sending over to the board is to look at what your pain points are with the existing code, what you would like to see as outcomes of redoing the sign code. And so I can give really good direction, um, to the consultant in helping us revise that. It's, it's not gonna be, um, I think it's something that we can get a draft out to pretty quick. Um, but I wanna make sure that we're really hitting, you know, what your concerns are um, and where you'd like to see things when it's done.
Okay.
So we can really drive that work in a really intentional manner. Um, we'll get a draft though, before we ever bring it to an application.
Okay.
Should we put a moratorium in place, even if we don't have necessarily some applications that we foresee coming in?
You know, um, we certainly could, you know, that's an option, um, you know, to put one in if we anticipate. And we do have, just, I'm kind of looking at what we have, um, new business-wise that could be coming in. Um, that might be, you know, a lot of these will have to go through construction probably before they're even gonna be ready for signage on anything that, you know, that we kind of know about. Um, if, uh, existing businesses is looking at redoing the signage, that would be something, you know, that maybe a moratorium could catch.
Yeah. That would be what I might be afraid of, existing.
On variances or like, uh?
On signs in general.
I mean, my, my recollection from looking at the sign code is it's, it's pretty hard to follow. It's a bit of a mess, like, so.
It contradicts.
I mean, I, like, a mor-, I can't, I mean, a moratorium, we can't do a moratorium on, like, all signs, right?
New permitting?
I mean, I guess we could.
Well, yeah, I guess it's, it, right, 'cause if you put a moratorium on accepting applications for what? It would only be a variance because now it's a use by right, according to the code.
But we could do something like super quick and dirty, like, you know? You know, until further notice, no signs over, all be high, any consistent with our, our. I mean, just like something really.
Sure, well, we could, you know, and, and we could bring together, bring forward a recommendation on that for you too.
Okay.
To consider some different options on, um, a moratorium.
Okay.
So we can work on getting that together. But I do just wanna really direct that work, um, and before we ever bring, you know, anything forward for an application, we'll get you a draft to consider first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that we can, like, head down through it.
I think just, I mean, for a direction, even on things about the moratorium, I mean, I think the general, like, top pain points are, like, height and illumination. Like, you know, impact both on dark skies and on neighboring communities.
Are there places in our zone currently that don't allow signs at all?
Nope, they're allowed under certain standards in all zone districts.
Okay.
They do have standards for.
Yeah.
They do have standards for just, you know, specific to each sign district.
Okay.
But I feel like it might be possible to write something like that, that avoids things that are too high or too bright.
Yeah.
Um, and prevent something through that.
And re- replacement that would.
It would include, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause I wonder if that's where we can eventually, like, have everything, um, kind of get to what we want in time with necessary replacement and repair. Restrictions, okay.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
We can work on that and get that to you. And then, um, just so that you know, the other, uh, code amendments that we will be working on is making ADUs as, um, an administrative, uh, review moving forward. Really kind of highlighted that, uh, this past hearing, you know, hopefully kind of demonstrated, um, that you, you ordered an ADU, um, CUP, and we also did a backcountry zoning, uh, site plan review, and just making both of those administrative, knowing that we can always elevate those up, um, making them administrative reviews. But if we get into unique circumstances, that we can always elevate those. And just an update, the backcountry structure, um, site plan that was done on the Horning property that was done, um, on the twenty-fourth. I have heard back from the Forest Service, and they have no concerns, um, about that. Didn't hear back from Hatmer, so I just wanted to kind of follow up on that. Um, cause that was something that was outstanding when we spoke last.
Okay.
And, um, so those will also be happening, also be adding some definitions, um, to the code for, um, long-term rental and primary, uh, residents, um, to, just to allow, to align with, um, deed restrictions that may be coming forth as part of new PUD requirements. So those are just a recap of everything, kind of, that's in the hopper for right now.
So adding.
Can you just, I'm so sorry, I was writing, I was saying your last comment, can you repeat that last one?
Just adding definitions to long-term rentals and primary residence.
Okay. To be complimentary of the deed restrictions that might come with PUDs.
Yeah.
Right, so those will be managed by the housing authority, but the code is where the definitions lie.
Okay. So those will be forthcoming.
Yeah, and so those are the updates. Um, just wanted to, to let you know, we will be getting out, um, our report from the department, as well as, you know, building permits. Um, we dipped down a little bit, but then we come back, um, strong. I think we had a little bit of a, um, we slowed surprisingly down just a little bit, um, right after the code adoption. Um, right before, we had it about, like, actually it's not surprising, and then we slowed down a little bit. But now, we're actually still, um, doing pretty well. I think they're gonna end up, um, over what we projected budget-wise this year, so. And, I don't know, but I think that's inclusive of everything I have.
Cool.
Just update-wise.
Sounds great. Thanks, Ann.
Sure.
Um, so anything for, any questions for Ann, follow-ups?
I just want a couple other, I mean, sort of, I mean, you're tackling so much, but, uh, and recently you'd sent out, like, something about, like, revisiting parking, um, allowances, and then also, like, the broader discussion about, um, kind of, l- looking at the IM zones near in to, to, uh, water and sewer infrastructure, and then OHV stuff. I don't know if you saw, like, those are all ticking along.
Yeah, they're, they're all, um, actually, thank you for bringing those up. We actually have four more things that we are working on too. So we're, we're, um, on short-term rentals. Um, we are working on, uh, we're already compiling, um, data and information. We're already starting our first complaint, going through and creating, um, spreadsheets of anything that we're finding non-compliant. Um, meeting with legal for, uh, setting up time to, uh, design, uh, good communication that's gonna go out for this first.
If you're not in compliance, okay. How many have you found?
Um, you know, I'm not sure yet, to be honest. I, probably a dozen, um, but that work is still pretty early. And we are, uh, gonna be using a site called, uh, AirDNA. Um, it does have a lot of, you know, we're beginning, it appears to have some good data. Um, and we're gonna glean some information from there and just make sure that it is capturing, you know? It'd be great if it did, because it combines all the sites that we go on to individually to, uh, do compliance. And so if it really does capture all of those different, um, sites, it would be amazing.
Okay.
So we are working with that right now to just really kind of, anything, remind anything, and make sure that they're, they're properly licensed.
I was gonna ask if you have, if you had talked to Adam Ducharme and all on the AirDNA, cause he's been working on that, using that?
Yeah, he did come in, um.
To duplicate a license or can share a subscription or something?
Right, yeah, we were.
It was a huge deal, but.
Yeah, yeah, looking at cost of it right now, you can do a free version, and that's what we, when we're really been, um, using just to kind of look and see it, you know, how good the data is. Um, but, but some really great, uh, statistics that are on there about occupancy, and it does map, um, locations. Is that mapping tool is really the key to see if they're capturing everything. Um, you know, early, early signs are that if the data on there is, is correct, um, and I don't have the exact number from the city, but it looks like between the city and the county that there'd be about ninety units that are potentially unlicensed, but again, I need to verify.
It's kind of high, though, really.
That, you know, that, that, I, I've taken the city count at a hundred and seventy-one, and I, I'm, I'm not sure that that's actually accurate. So I'm, we look here from Chatham, you know, exactly what their count is, and then of course, I know ours. Um, but they've got, I think it's three hundred and ninety units, I'm reading, uh, for DNA. So, um, that would, that would be probably a, a, you know, between the two jurisdictions, and at least an idea of my, of where my.
Okay.
Um, and then, yeah, I will, uh, work with Chris to, um, about how we should, um, draft those template letters or first, uh, communications on non-compliance and, and just, um, keep working on that piece, as well as, uh, looking with Michael from SCAD, who's got some great ideas about, um, different codes and some changes that have happened, initial terminal, um, licensing. And so we'll be working, diving into that piece as well. Um, the IM, that would, that's probably the one item, um, that you mentioned, uh, Jeff, that I think that what I'd like to do is, I think, some goal setting with planning commission and the board at the first of the year, um, to start looking at that future land use, um, and start creating, yes, yes, all, and, you know, I kind of, so, um, uh, Bryce and I are creating a database that's of the mapping to really help, um, the planning commission and the board, and, you know, with those, um, early discussions, and then, but hoping to come to set some goals around that. Um, another thing that I did bring up is that we have met with, um, CDPHD and, uh, the EPA about the IC, uh, the institutional controls and the potential, uh, code amendment there, so, um, and we will, you know, also be working with Melanie on those as well. But tentatively, um, what we have been talking about with them, and they would like to, um, host a town hall. Um, and so we're gonna work on identifying all the stakeholders and doing that in February. Um, and working on either venue, of where it happens, and, uh, making sure that we're doing good outreach and education on that, so we get good attendance to it. With a follow-up, um, we're looking to initiate an application for a code amendment in March. And, um, they have sent over some draft language for that. So, um, we'll be back, uh, forwarded as well. Honestly, staff hasn't spent a lot of time with it yet, um, because we have kind of earmarked that for some first of the year work. Um, but happy to send over just your preliminary, um, thoughts on it, so you take a look.
Okay.
So, I'll give this to the board. Um, parking, yes. Um, I think that I heard, you know, some different thoughts on parking, and so I think I will need to kind of vet that a little bit through the board, um, before we're ready for code amendment. Um, but we'll create that opportunity to, to talk that through. Um, and right now, keeping in mind that a, um, conditional use permit or, um, there's, there's an opportunity through the variance process to consider a reduction in parking, um, already. Um, so even though that code, you know, will be something that we'll bring forward for you to consider, there is, um, kind of a leap out of already built into the code. If a project can pencil better or be more affordable or bring better sense to have a reduction in parking already. So, um, knowing that that's there, it will be something that, uh, staff will bring to you for better consideration, but it's, it's probably not on the top, um, of the list right now with the other things I mentioned. But yeah, thanks for bringing those other things up. An OHV, so I think the other thing is that we're working really hard, um, to contact and reach out to different representatives from user groups, from the snowmobile club, um, Cooper, you know, we just wanna look at all of our resources, make sure that we're having good, meaningful conversations, um, and that we bring back, um, a new draft, uh, to the board for consideration. The first one was just kind of to gauge what direction we should go and get some, you know, ideas from the board. So we're gonna come back with a new draft, um, for you to take a look at, just think, um, after we've had some, uh, done some more research and had some better conversations or even deeper conversations about that. And then, um, see what you think about taking that out to a stakeholder town hall.
The draft?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, um, but, but we've already started having those conversations, and some of them are already scheduled, and some of them are in the works.
Okay.
So, yeah, thanks for bringing those up too. They're all on our list down. Oh, and the other, we're also, uh, working very hard to get the information out to general contractors. They need to pass their certification tests by, um, November thirtieth, because December first is the requirement for them to have those certifications in order to call for inspection. We have been sending messaging out on a monthly basis, but for the last, we, we started in October, so we had every two weeks. Now we'll send it weekly, and it gives them direct links, um, to how to obtain that, that, uh, education and get the certification. So again, you can do it from the comfort of your own home, on a desktop that has a camera, where they can proctor the test with you, um, or you can go to testing, uh, facilities. And already we have a handful of contractors that have given us their certification. So we are continuing to make sure we get that information out, through to that, uh, group of, of general contractors in the area, everybody that's licensed, so.
Okay.
I could probably keep going.
I know you could.
I would not gonna continue adding to it either, but.
Uh, just on the note of training too, um, um, at one point, we're, like, encouraging the planning commission to do training or go to workshops or whatever, and, and I think everybody's pretty well self-facilitated or, uh, initiated on seeking those things out. And let's just remind folks that that's an option maybe, and I'd like to, for us to continue to support up the county funding their, kind of, education on that.
That sounds great. Yeah, we did send, you know, we did the DOLA training, uh, we sent out, uh, information on, um, water, different water classes that were happening. Um, we'll continue to forward those opportunities off, out, and, um, make, uh, funding available to them. We still have some, uh, in, uh, but it's still this year that we could help. The other thing that's gonna be coming up in the spring will be the Rocky Mountain Land Use Institute, um, uh, which is a great, uh, opportunity too. Um, and the APA was just in Vail, uh, where, yep, Jackie did an amazing job of speaking that. Um, but the Rocky Mountain Land Use, uh, conference will be in Denver in March.
Cool. Awesome. Anything else?
Maybe just one thing on the IM Rezone, and I think you know this, but just, I, I think that, that thinking, um, from the, like, code and rezoning side, I need to dovetail with, like, some of the broader work about, like, how much new commercial development do we want or need? You know, and we shouldn't, like, you get to rezone more area or less area than we need to support the commercial development. We need to be, you know, financially sustainable in the long run.
Yeah, and maybe just, I don't know if you've been updated, but we haven't really been talking with the EDC. Been talking with the ADC and Better Cities and whatnot, we haven't engaged with them, but we've gotten a proposal for some of that work to. Kind of map land areas and then organize that with, as Jeff said, the, the value. From the assessor's office of those land areas and how that will be supplementing commercial taxation, tax revenues. So maybe I think we just need to like kind of coordinate the timing.
Of that.
Of all two or three of, two of those things.
Yeah.
So, is this. Okay, so that work is.
We've, we've not, we've only reviewed a proposal from them, but the board, we, in our work session, we haven't made a decision on it.
Okay.
But I, I think we really liked that idea because it was kind of mapping. The concept, which I think is, is actually kind of hard for everybody to, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Of like the idea of identifying that commercial or light industrial areas and then the mechanics of what we want to go through to then. Whether designated or resoned or put in the future land use map. What businesses, when you get into the details maybe of what businesses might relocate there. I think maybe like that's where maybe, maybe planning and development falls off of. Care, I mean, I know you care, but like the process, I guess, in that piece, but. Maybe we could.
But I think you can help us find those valuable.
Yeah, I, I also think that, yeah, even though, you know, we look at things in a little, in a different lens necessarily. Having that situational awareness, even knowing that that's a proposal that's been brought before the board is super valuable to know, so. I will. I will, yeah, I will follow up. With you guys a little bit more or find out a little bit more, just, just so that, you know, it's in some periphery. Having better understanding, what is it gonna be all included in that?
Send you the proposal too, to look at, Tim will send it to you and you can just see what you think of that.
Okay, that sounds great. And see if it's something you know. Make sure that Bryce is aware of that as well and we get it together.
And you're definitely a stakeholder and partner in that process. So you should be right there with us.
Yeah, that's just great. That sounds great, just so, yeah.
We look forward to you managing that work too.
I mean, organize.
No, no, I'm, I'm super excited that, that that's happening because you're right, it's gonna work wonderful in conjunction. With exactly, you know, the goal of looking at the future land use map. The hope is that when we. You know, look at our plan, that we're able to get a consultant, something that really is very identified and very real. To us and take them a considerable amount of time. Awesome, that's great, that's great. So thanks for. Make sure that we're aware of it.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Anne.
Yeah, no, thank you. Always great to catch up.
So we'll move into file number twenty-two dash thirty, oh, yes?
No, no, I'll probably.
Oh, okay, okay. File twenty-two dash thirty-three, eighteen twenty-four Ridgeview Drive accessory dwelling units. Presented by Ann Scharder.
So at this hearing, the board, you know, really, there really wasn't much deliberation. After the board retired from the meeting, this motion was made based on. The suggestion in the staff report without any deviation from it or additional, you know, consideration. From the planning commission. It's always good for me to just let you know if there was additional deliberation or comments after you left. That affected the decision, but in this case, it, there wasn't. They went right to the motion. So that motion is, it's October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, joint public hearing, Lake County Planning Commission, number Jamie Cypher made the following motion. I move that the planning commission recommend conditional approval to the board of county commissioners of file twenty-two thirty-three, a conditional use permit application. For a necessary dwelling unit on a parcel of land less than one acre pursuant to the standards of section five point three point one B. At eighteen twenty-four Ridgeview Drive, Lethal, Colorado. Further finding that the approval criteria pursuant to Lake County Land Development Code. Section three point six point one point F have been met as evidenced in the staff report dated October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two for file twenty-two thirty-three. The conditions for approval are, one, applicant shall work with community planning and development to obtain a building permit and subsequent certificate. Of completion for a fully permitted accessory dwelling unit. Part of this process will include, but not limited to approval from Lethal Lake County Fire Department. Heartful Water and Lethal Sanitation and two, all statements made by the applicant in the application and hearing shall be considered conditions of approval. The motion was seconded by Howard Tritt, that motion passed with five members in favor and zero in opposition. And do you have the staff report? We are reporting these now with the board's action and the statement motion so that. Forevermore, the institutional memory has the file and the information on the file.
I don't have any other questions for you, Anne. I just wanted to, I know it was brought up at the planning commission's joint, the joint meeting to. As an existing ADU, just making sure to mention that all the neighboring. Properties have been notified and I don't, I think you reported that you did not receive anything.
That's correct.
Correct?
Yeah, in fact, you know, the applicant suggested that the neighbors said, well, you know. This has actually been in place previously and, and we didn't receive any complaints. It was, it was properly duly published. Mailed and posted on the property and we didn't receive any feedback, either opposition or in support. But more importantly, no opposition.
Okay. And also the, does this, I'm sorry, I can't remember, does this property have a short-term rental license or is it not?
That's how we discovered the ADUs because they applied for one.
Okay.
And so they applied just before the moratorium because this was not a compliance, accessory dwelling. We are not, they do not have one. And we did talk to the applicant and even their application. He's considering using it as a long-term rental. And, you know, fully understands that it won't be eligible for short-term rental until this is all worked through. But that's how it came into our knowledge that it existed.
Okay.
I'll move to approve file number twenty-two dash thirty-three as read into the record with the two conditions. For. The eighteen twenty-four Ridgeview Drive.
A second?
Okay, any further discussion?
None for me?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, Anne.
Our, our co-compliance, new staff member starts tomorrow, so that's. We are sharing up with the assessor's office and super excited to have them on board. So we will be bringing Jake around to meet everybody.
That's great.
Nice.
Thanks, Anne. Okay. Moving into number three, the membership proposal for Lake County to join Colorado Communities for Climate Action. CC four C A, the amount of five thousand dollars presented to us today by Commissioner Feebler.
Yeah, thanks. So, so yeah, just to say, I brought a couple of hard copies of that resolution if anyone wants to see a hard copy in front of them.
I saw your email come through, yes. Do you want one to ask?
Uh, no, I'm good.
And I think. The two specific asks, I mean, one is, is just to have the five thousand dollar membership. To use sort of in our budget. And then the sort of substantive action to join CC or C A is to. Express support for their policy position paper, which is also in, in the material, so. Maybe just quickly, so CC four C A is kind of similar to CCAT. In terms of what it does for local government, you know, counties and cities. I think one, but then obviously with the focus on energy and climate. Policy and, and rulemaking and actually partner really closely with CCAT and CCAT tends to not. Weight into the climate and energy. Areas because of the partnership with CC four C A. So I think it's in that regard, since we're a CCAT member. It's a natural addition to us, you know, trying to be more aware of and weigh in on state and to some extent, federal policy. One thing. CC four C A does do a lot more work than CCAT on tracking rulemaking. Would I think, to get into why I think it's a good idea for us to join, I think that's sort of really where the rubber meets the road. And I think it's in our interest to be at the table in some of those things with more and more state and federal climate and energy policy coming down the tracks. Just making sure that local governments in general, but especially smaller, more rural, less wealthy communities like ours. Are properly taken into account and those really large times, just inadvertently or whatever. Those rules and eligibility criteria and everything just don't always work for us. So, so I mean, that's really it. It's just, it's, it's another mechanism for us to be paying attention to significant. Policymaking efforts that affect us and, and, you know, and that also potentially, you know, support or encourage. Directions we're moving in. I think it's also a compliment to some of the work that we're. In with C four on, you know, working with Excel's partners and energy program to understand. The county and county government energy use instead of our eligibility, Excel's grant programs. Maybe, I don't know, I can stop there and take questions. I can also get into what's in the policy statement that we are expressing support for. Highlights on that or answer questions.
No, I have no questions. That'd be great if you did.
And I think the policy statement's really good. I think one, like they worked on a lot of policy statements over like the years. It, it doesn't, it covers a lot of areas, but at a high enough level that it's not gonna get outdated really fast. So, and I think the, you know, so it, it covers both resilience and adaptation, you know, as well as emission reductions. It covers buildings, transportation, electricity sector, electricity regulation, you know, some of the DC issues that we've run into. And also I don't think it stakes out. Any particularly overly ambitious or controversial positions, like it's top line. And really the, the. Top line policy position is supporting Colorado's current, you know, greenhouse gas goals. Or stronger, but it doesn't lay out a number that it's advocating for. So again, I think it really speaks to CC four C A being more focused on getting implementation right. Of. The Colorado greenhouse gas roadmap and associated legislation and not out there. I, I, I don't think its primary focus is advocating like stronger and stronger action. It's getting implementation right. And I'll also say it, I think it does a good job of. Staying at a high level or avoiding some of the more controversial issues like the role of nuclear or new nuclear. And it also, so carbon capture and storage or, you know, like direct air capture. All those are also fairly controversial. Some people view those as avoiding the real work of reducing emissions. So it takes a broad. View on that. So again, I think, I don't think there are any good controversial measures in there. Again, I just, I think it's a good thing for us to be a part of because of the, the focus on. Some practical rulemaking and the impact of those rules on local government.
Are the dues annual?
Yeah.
Okay. So this would be for twenty-three?
This would be for twenty-three.
Okay.
And yeah, so, and, and again, sort of, I mean, it. The information we'll get and the opportunities to engage will be very similar to CCAT, you know, CCI. There's newsletters, there are briefings and events they do. Things and then opportunities to, you know, testify or submit comments that they support. Also, I mean, I think if, if five thousand seems steep, I don't, somewhere in there, there, they have that rein. You know, they, they have scaled use amounts by size of community and size of budget or. I think they're also quite flexible and the like is to be members if like thousand is a, seems high. I actually can't remember what our CCAT dues are.
Ooh, five hundred or one thousand, but the same, I, I think, or maybe we paid the two thousand last time, but. It was kind of similar upon entry of CCAT. They just wanted us to give what we heard to.
Yeah.
Have the opportunity, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't have that discussion with CC four C A. I think five thousand is the, is the lower end. Of the dues range for the size we are, but we're also at the lower end of, of community size. I, I think, again, if, if the difference between two thousand a year and five thousand a year is. Is a deal breaker for us. I bet we can go ask for a reduction. Also, forgot to mention, did not get the resolution done in time for Chris to review, so this would be pending legal review. There's no rush, so we could also do, like ask the legal review and we could go back to CC four C A and ask about dues levels. Or we could approve pending legal review today. Again, I don't think there's any.
Good. Okay, because I apologize if I didn't have a chance. I didn't see that until this morning, so I apologize. With that, but the resolution does need some tweaks and so I'd like to help revise it.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I, I would say it was, it was based on a template that they, that CC four C A provides and some other communities and I just added in. Like I tweaked to. Recognize some of the stuff we have done in the regions before, but yeah.
Sounds good. I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions or a strong feeling either way, other than just being curious about the membership amount. But. I suppose it's such a suffer if it, if it is not super urgent, get the review of the. Resolution.
Yeah.
Okay.
And yeah, see what, see what their response might be to. Or, or, or look, I don't, I don't recall seeing that table either, Jeff, on, on the membership, but.
But I think you could reach out to them.
Yeah, yeah, and I can, I can find out what our CCAT dues are and sort of make that. Except it shouldn't, shouldn't be double what they, um, although, yeah, I'm not. Now that you say that, it does ring a bell that we'll have some kind of special break from CCAT.
Yeah. The, and if this is kind of in parallel with CCAT, I like that CCAT takes a little deeper dive on some issues than CCI. Which I think is really beneficial because there's so much membership in CCI, but sometimes it's. Pushed pretty quickly, but CCAT takes a little deeper dive and puts that into their subcommittees.
Yeah, and I, and I think C four C A exists for many of the same reasons that CCAT exists as a complement to CCI. But there are some things that CCI just doesn't have this membership support to.
Yeah, yeah, no, I like it. I, I, I support it. And, you know.
So do you want to clean up the resolution and then bring that back for adoption?
But, but, I mean, or, yeah, it, it, it needs some revisions to.
Okay, then.
What do you, what would you prefer?
That's fine.
Offer. Making a motion to approve the resolution pending legal review and. Budgeting for the membership of, membership of up to five thousand dollars.
Okay.
If you want.
My suggestion would be a, a currently amended to that, to motion to approve the membership. So that it, just the membership, because technically with the resolution, you're supposed to read it into the record essentially for your approval. So my suggestion and, and just say, and, or, meaning the motion to approve the membership and further legal review, pending further legal review and finalization of the resolution.
And put the resolution.
On the next meeting.
That's fine. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And that way, that gives, you know, Commissioner Feeder the opportunity to go back and talk to them about the fees and stuff. And then we can do the final approval at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I think that, that sounds great. Yeah. And, and, but then, so then if the motion is, is just to do like, yeah, up to 5,000, you know, and that gives us the formal approval to put it in the budget. Or other memberships. And also just while we're at it, so, so the, their membership dues table goes from communities of 5,000 to 50,000. So that's the range we're in. So we're at the low end of that.
Okay.
And, and then 5,000 is the, is the low end.
Of the table?
Of the table.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, communities up to 5,000 or 1,000, so.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't think we're out of line as seem to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, well, I'll, I'll move to approve, uh, the membership and, uh, budget inclusion of, uh, Lake County to join Colorado Communities for Climate Action, CC4CA. Amount of membership of up to 5,000.
Oh, second.
Right, any further discussion?
No.
Thanks.
Appreciate you bringing that to us, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you. And then all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Wonderful. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, number four is the Second Amendment to the Public Access Easement. The Arkansas River Community Preserve between Lake County Board of County Commissioners and Central Colorado Conservancy. Um, and this is a ratification.
Yes.
Of the amendment.
Yep.
And so we have previously approved the map of these properties.
Yeah.
For closing to preserve, um, of open space. And I will hand it over to you to give details of the closing.
Great, thanks. Um, yeah, so we've been working for a few years now, um, with uh, the Lake County Open Space Initiative that identified a number of properties, um, adjacent to the Arkansas River as priority areas for, um, consideration of conservation. Central Colorado Conservancy has been a member of the COCE for quite some time and initiated, but you can see here in the legend, the original properties is the spotted, um, uh, properties highlighted here. Um, and then this, uh, a, an amendment to add properties, uh, to our easement and developing agreement between Central Colorado Conservancy, Lake County and Colorado Open Lands. So the hashed properties were added, um, as a second effort and, and as, as kind of as Central Colorado Conservancy closed and, and pursued lands, more and more property owners came forth interested in the opportunity, um, to, to the effort. Central Colorado Conservancy has done fundraising. We contributed $1,000, I think in 2017 or 18, um, towards that initial purchase. Goco funds, natural resource damages through state, um, have been acquired for the second acquisition or additional acquisitions on beyond that first effort. Um, and so this Second Amendment, uh, third iteration of, uh, the easing, which, which is probably the final, um, includes these properties that are just highlighted without any shading inside. And so you can see we've, they've really done a great job, um, hitting that, those priority areas and that target, um, of lands and conserving that along the Arkansas. There were some ancillary properties that were not, um, contiguous either along the Arkansas or with each other in what's mapped here, but those are not, um, available anymore for purchase. And so the properties, I'll just pull up this here, and this is the original 103 acres, added about 60 acres. And we've added another 110. And I just want to also recall the conversations or questions about, um, you know, perhaps taking these, taking these properties off of the tax roll. The value of them is approximately 28 to $33,000. Something that I'm sure others realized, but, uh, it didn't quite hit home to me until, um, I heard it from Public Works and, and my comment with the COCE was, a lot of these properties, you know, a lot of our county-owned properties, property taxes don't exactly pay their way as far as maintaining and providing services and infrastructure. So I think that's, that's particularly true for these areas as they have really, um, tricky access on that east side of the Arkansas River, um, across the rail line. And, but again, I think of course the, the primary motivation and benefit here is just preserving those areas for public access and public benefit. And preserving that natural resource.
Cool.
Sorry, Sarah, I spaced out for a second. The, the, the property that's labeled second additional property.
Needs right here.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, there's.
And this.
So that's the latest addition to the collection of the properties.
So then all of this would be open access, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, I also was pull up this map of ours that we have for public, um, access. And just kind of toggle on and off. These are all the lands under conservation in Lake County, which is
Oh, one, yes.
Pretty impressive.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, again, natural resource along the Arkansas, um, the recreation access, recreation economy. And, and we'll work with Colorado Open Lands and CCC, Central Colorado Conservancy, um, to develop our land management plan, um, which was named in our first agreement and easement. And we were aiming for a 12-month turnaround on that back in 2019 maybe. But because of the additional properties that are the process, it's been hunted until we, um, until we have these final, the final acquisitions.
Right. On the, on the management plan, what's, um, what do you think the timeline then is for?
How much time do we have? Three years?
To develop it?
Yeah.
One, one, the ideal would be one year of development. And they have, they actually, um, have some, a small amount of excess funds and they're going to hire someone to facilitate that process through three partners.
That was my next question.
Yes, so that is very good. Um, I, I will, I learned on last Friday at the closing, um, that Kyle, so Adam Bay had been the executive director, Kyle Clifton had been interim filling his shoes. And the, um, president of their board, um, was doing some of that work. Also, they've hired an ED. Now I cannot remember her name, of course. I'm sorry. But, uh, so they're going through a little bit of transition and Kyle has left and taken another opportunity on the West Coast. So, um, definitely kind of on the same page as us in capacity and understanding that, yeah.
Okay.
Assistance is appreciated.
Yeah, but that's fantastic that there's a little bit of money for some staff help on that. Stan's gonna do that. Like, who's gonna do that?
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, and we'll bring, um, we can, I'll, when we start having those conversations of what that looks like and or putting that out to bed for any kind of consultant, if we do, um, depending on who is engaging. I'll definitely keep that posted. And, and certainly include community planning and development, Public Works, um, in that.
Yes.
Okay.
And also, sorry, just a reminder, like, we don't intend to develop these lands for public recreation enjoyment. It's really just to kind of look at the parking areas, the existing roads there.
Yeah.
And maybe to monitor to make sure that they're not getting abused, um, as far as the access is going. But, um, not developing campgrounds or any new uses.
Trails or bridges or?
Yeah.
Well, does it have the ability to connect to the existing trail system or anything?
Uh, yeah, it's a little, the station rail trail does go through a little bit. So the properties are really down here.
There's just a tiny gap, right?
And then we've got Hayden Pond. Right here.
Mm-hmm. No, you were right.
Okay. Right here. Hayden Pond's here.
Yep.
And then these properties come along here. So it does create this contiguous, um, opportunity. And again, I think the station rail trail follows some of these, um, existing county roads up in here.
Okay.
Which is something that maybe we could look at in the first quarter of the year. Is that, we have a consensus on that, the station rail trail conversation? Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Thanks for continuing to agree on that. I appreciate it.
Well, and big, huge thank you to, um, Central Colorado Conservancy and Colorado Open Lands for plugging away and dealing with all of those logistics with the real estate.
Yeah.
It's a big, it's a big lift.
Yeah, definitely. Okay. I will make a motion that we approve the ratification of the Second Amendment to Public Access Agreement on the Arkansas River Community Preserve. On the easement.
A second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, that's really cool.
Yeah. All right, seeing then, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you so much. The last thing we have on our agenda today is bills and payroll.
Oh, October 21st. Um, I'll move to approve bills and payroll for the pay period ending on October 21st, 2022.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay. Seeing then, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Um, okay, seeing that that's the end of our meeting today, um, we'll adjourn at 12:05 PM. Thank you all for joining us today.